At exactly seven o'clock. This is the regularly scheduled meeting for the zoning commission for the town of Simsbury for Monday, March 2nd, 2015. We will appoint Jackie for Jerry Post. And look at the minutes for February 23rd. I will confess, I actually did not.
I didn't, we don't have them.
Did we get those?
They weren't on the website.
No, they weren't.
Perry was out this weekend.
Yeah, well, we only had the one week.
We can approve them next time. Yeah, so, let's, we will defer that to the next regularly scheduled meeting. So, item four, public hearings. Application number 15-04 of James Eater, agent, Folly Farm associates, owner for special exception pursuant to Article 10, Section 8 of the town of Simsbury zoning regulations for a temporary liquor permit for a one-day event on the property located at 75 Hartford Road. Someone here speak, all right, please. Thank you. And we ask that you speak at the lectern because it is, we are being recorded. All right? Thank you. State your name and, are you taking notes tonight? All right.
Excuse me one second.
Has to start the recording?
Yep.
Recorder didn't go right there.
It doesn't start itself.
Well, like the old one.
Obviously, without any admin this week, I'm not doing very well.
You're doing great.
We're off to a good start.
Okay.
All right, great. Just state your name and your address for the record. Yeah?
Sure, yeah, I'm Barbara Foley. My address, my home address, my business address.
Either one, that's fine.
My business address, the Ron Foley Foundation is 1,000 Farmington Avenue, Suite 108A in West Hartford, Connecticut.
Okay. And are you local?
Yes, in West Hartford.
Okay, great. And just summarize briefly what your application is about. Thank you.
Sure, I'm here for a liquor permit for our fundraiser, which we have every year at Folly Farm in Simsbury. It is a Kentucky Derby Day party to benefit pancreatic cancer research, awareness, and education. And we also give directly to patients for their needs when they're going through chemo.
Great. And you have done this, we've done this every year I've been here.
Yes, this is our seventh annual.
Great, good. So, are there any questions from the commission relative to this event? One day, very well managed, tips-trained distributors during the day. Thank you. Is there anyone here from the audience that would like to speak to this application? This is a public hearing. Hearing none? I'd be looking for a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, thank you.
Thank you very much. I have this affidavit.
For Mr. Peck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right? And if you'll indulge us, we have one other public hearing of a similar fashion, and then we'll get to the business of, yeah, we hope it is. Application number 15-05, Mr. David Ryan, not present, president of Simsbury Performing Arts Center, Inc., agent, town of Simsbury owner, for a special exception pursuant to Article 10, Section H of the Sims, Town of Simsbury zoning regulations for a temporary liquor permit for a series of events on the property located at 22 Iron Horse Boulevard. Is there someone here to speak on Mr. Ryan's behalf?
My name is Ferg Jansen, 3 Fox 10. Mr. Ryan is in warmer climates, so I'm the substitute tonight. We're requesting permission to, your permission to serve beer and wine by tips-trained employees for the concerts that happen at the Meadows. Our season is basically May 1st till October. We start off with the five HSO concerts. We've already have on August 12th, The Real Beach Boys with the Hartford Symphony Orchestra. We also have Willie Nelson's coming back this year. We could have up to five other events. With this license, it will save us going through all the checkpoints every time we put the proof. We already have public gathering permits. We've met with the police and the fire marshal and all the powers that be, and have, all those events have been signed up. So, we'd like your permission to do as we've done before in last year, and having this permit, which worked fine last year, just saves a lot of paperwork for everybody involved.
I have a couple of questions for, does this include the Talke Mountain Music Festival?
Yes.
Okay, so this is a comprehensive approval you're seeking. And will you continue to have BYOB at all of these, or just the Talke Mountain Music Festival, or any of these?
I'm sorry, I didn't get it.
The ability to bring your own?
Yes, that is grandfathered in all we do for the Talke music. Their regular five concerts, that's true, it's BYO like it's always been since the start of, we have a small booth where we provide beer and wine for those who either come later or want something, and usually it's local, local microbrews. And for the one concert, the HSO is going to play with the Beach Boys, and that will be, it won't be BYO because the promoters demand that, you know, they have to pay for security and all that, and they get a percentage.
Okay. And so you'll adequately warn the crowds beforehand, especially in that case?
Yes, we have last year, I think it works pretty well. We have signs, it's on the website, and you get a ticket, and it's all, the two are different.
All right. And then I'll ask sort of one open and ended question. Does it matter to us if, because we haven't named all of the performers, is there a performer that if they brought in, we would feel differently about the liquor permit than others?
Not if they're tips-trained. I mean, I think I'm okay with it without really putting a whole lot of thought into it, but I think that's protection.
So, the control, the controls are adequate at the admissions, the signs, I just want to be sure that we, let me say this, that if...
We had very few complaints lines, people, oh, I forgot, or whatever, you know, it really wasn't an issue.
And there were a lot of good signs, especially for like a Lynyrd Skynyrd. It was a new band or artist, and there were a lot of signs that said, no coolers for this, and people.
And that went smoothly, yeah.
It seemed like it.
Okay, great. Any other questions for, and are there any, anyone from the audience that would like to speak to this particular topic? All right, hearing none, I would look for a motion to close the public hearing. Will we close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. All right. Next up on our agenda would be to consider the action on any agenda items, which would include these two applications. Application 15-4 for Folly Farm and application 15-05 for the Performing Arts Center. So, let's take them one at a time. Any discussion relative to the Folly Farm event? So, I'd be looking for a motion for approval for that special permit.
Yeah, I'll move approval of application 15-04.
I'll second that.
I'd just like to say from staff point of view, we've had no complaints whatsoever. Everything's been run well.
Great. So, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? You're approved? All right. Second, application 15-05 for the Simsbury Performing Arts Center.
I'll move that approval as well. Application 15-05?
Second. Seconded by Mr. Peterson. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Just like to state that the dates are May 1st through October 31st, as stated on the application. Just want to make sure.
That was an end date, yeah.
And we're not specifying a limited, a number of events. In other words, this is open-ended for that time period, if they add or subtract events, that's fine.
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. I think, and I think as Mr. Peterson mentioned, tips-trained is important to all concerts, regardless of when they're specified on the application.
And we should recognize in our approval that there is BYOB for the Talke, not music festival, but for promoter-sponsored events. That will be sale of liquor, sale of beer and wine only. These are all beer and wine permits, correct? Right. Okay. So, all in favor, say aye. I think we did that.
We did that, yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much.
All right, next up is item six, informal discussion for ADT, Walcott Road, redevelopment by Gerard Brothers Corporation. Thank you. Thank you.
Is there more to that there? Is there anything? My name is Mike Gerard, and I am president of Gerard Brothers Corporation and president of Simscroft Farms, located at 2 Farms Village Road in Simsbury. Just thought I'd like to thank the commission for the opportunity to come here tonight to, on an informal basis, to basically review proposed zone change, industrial one to industrial two at ADT Walcott Road, up in the middle of the town. I'd like to give you a little update to start with. I was going to say, why is he going there, but he figured it out. We're working with two professionals as well as town staff to develop the Iron Horse Walcott parcels where Simscroft is located right now. And we've been there since 1969, and we've been looking for a place to move. We're well advanced in our plans for Iron Horse, hopefully we'll see something in the next several months. And of course, I have that place to go once I can sell product. So, I looked around, my brothers and I looked around. We looked in Granby, and we looked in East Granby, and we looked in, East Granby, Granby, and Bloomfield. To be perfectly honest with you, we want to stay in Simsbury. So, again, we met with town staff a while ago, a while back, and about a year and a half ago, and looked for some possibilities as far as where we could go in town. Well, there isn't a lot of I-2 zone property in town, so there's not very many places to go, and especially with my business, dirt, trucks, things that people, well, you know, everybody's lived with it down Iron Horse. We basically have decided to relocate the office also. We were going to, we were going to leave the office for this, maybe it'll be in the state there for the time being, but eventually the office is going to go to Walcott Road We, when we decided, when we found a piece of property on Walcott Road last summer, it seemed to be a perfect use for us. Not only is it a perfect, it has all the, it has the sizes, almost 10 acres of land. It's accessible to the north and the south with vehicles. It's in an area close to the dump, but it really doesn't bother us to be close to the dump. It's something that we think would fit not only our use, but the intentions of the town in place to keep, to have a business such as ours. We think a business such as ours is important to the town of Simsbury also. The property itself right now is on industrial one. It requires, industrial one requires 10 acres minimum for the, that's all. And it has 9.79 acres, which technically is non-conforming industrial one use. So, what we're hoping to do is if we can change the zone, the I-2 has no restriction as far as area, lot area, so consequently we'll bring it into performance. And also, the use itself as industrial one, industrial two would allow all the uses in industrial one. So, realistically, you're adding a use, but you're basically maintaining all the other uses so that in the future, at some point in time, it could be used for an industrial one use if it was appropriate. With me tonight is Ed Lally, civil engineer and planner from Windsor, and Chip Kinnear from Ranis Houston, car mechanic. Ed is going to explain a little bit about what our plans are with regards to the site, and also, we will see the handout there, which is basically, just kind of gives you a good idea of where the site is actually located, with respect to the town of Anfield, and where Phoneon is next door, which we'll get to in a minute, there's something we're doing with Phoneon on the property also. And everything else that surrounds it, the Herman Drive, the airport, and so forth and so on. Okay, so, Ed?
Sure. Thank you. For the record, I'm Ed Lally, a licensed professional engineer and landscaper, have an office in Windsor. And Mike asked us to work with him on this project, and he's spent a lot of time figuring out what he needs and how it would function, based on many, many decades of experience. And then we took his thoughts and tweaked them a little bit, and came up with a plan that you have, a small copy, a couple of large copies, and this one with some color on it. The proposal is to use this nine, almost 10 acres of land for his facility, keeping it in town and vacating the piece on Iron Horse. In conversations with his abutting property owners to find out, are they going to be upset if he comes here? It was determined that his abutter to the left has a need for additional parking spaces. There, the parking calculators I handed out to you, they have sufficient parking on their site to meet their requirements of zoning, but they don't have sufficient parking on their site to meet their requirements, and so they need some additional spaces. So, we've drawn out a plan that has some additional parking area that's tied into their parking so that their employees can use this entrance, come in here and use this. We've screened it off and fenced it off from the balance of the site, but that property would remain, at least at this juncture, property of Simscroft should they go forward. And there would be some sort of cross easement or some other arrangements so that the actual needs of that abutter, so that they can stay at their facility and utilize their facility fully, would be met. This would end up with some number, I don't know what the number is, but we were asked to show at least 20 additional parking spaces, some number of relatively high-tech, well-paying jobs in town. Would also mean that they would bring in a bunch more equipment and machinery to do those jobs, and that would help the town's tax base as well. Mike doesn't need the whole 10 acres, and so this is his way of being a good neighbor, helping out others in town, and making him fit in with the neighborhood. There's an existing building on the site which is going to be maintained. There'll be an office building here, that building in this area, another building in here, behind the proposed building, there'll be a scale, and then some gravel material area, DEEP compliance, salt and sand storage shed, some formalized car parking for visitors and employees, and then some parking on the gravel, about 24 spaces in this direction, and perhaps a few more over here, utilizing the bulk of the site. Planting berms along here, depressing this area slightly, the topography falls back, and so to get a level site, we depress this area slightly, which would further cut down the view of any operations from the road. Create some landscape berms with high-quality landscaping across the front, and push the whole thing back from the required CFA to something quite significantly greater than the required CFA. There would be stormwater management area here, and some material storage areas through there. This vegetation pretty much exists. Fence, there is a fence around most of the property that would be upscale, upgraded to a security fence, so that the area is gated, people can't come into the site or out of the site without permission or gates being unlocked. And all in all, you have a relatively attractive site, well-screened from the Walcott Road. Sewer is available, water is available, no wetlands on the site, so those are all sandy material, about 14 feet or more. It's not in the aquifer protection zone. It seems like made for this, except that the zone is I-1, and needs to be I-2. So, the first step in this process would be the application for a zone change, and we're just here to say, not asking to judge the application that you don't have to get before you, but asking for your comments on the concept, the plan, the idea of moving Gerard from the center, yet keeping them in town. Just the whole package, like input.
I have a couple of questions. So, the, let's go back to this parking concession. That's this parking area down at the bottom?
That would be this little bit here.
You're not going to subdivide the property, you're just going to allow them to use the space?
Well, we've talked about, there's a possibility he may want to own it, and that would, that would have to be part of whatever we do with the application. In other words, that would have to, right now, it's very crowded, he's got a very, he has a very crowded site, he has no more room to really do anything. So, we could section off this property as long as it came out of, you know, a plan, a site plan showing that. And it wouldn't be, it would stay in conformance because the I-2 doesn't have any minimum size requirements. So, we could cut that off and still end up with all we need for our working.
Yeah.
But that's something that Tom and I will have to work out at some point, as far as which way we do it.
That would be a lot line revision on every subdivision or subdivision, because you're not creating additional parcel, you're simply moving the lot line.
Okay.
So, there'd be two parcels beforehand.
He can hand that piece to his property and take it away from yours?
Correct.
Is that what you're talking about?
Correct.
And now, how much of the, the whole 10 acres is going to remain unpaved or covered and used, I mean, is it dirt, is it gravel?
All of those is pavement, right here. This is gravel right here.
Okay.
And this, we'll be storing construction materials in this area here, and probably a little bit down and through here.
Okay.
This would try, we try to keep this, maintain the screen, although, when you drive by, as you've gone at the shop, if you notice, all those big pine trees that are there, well, they were all this high at one point in time when they built Iron Horse. We had, we built them, and now you can't see really what's going on there unless you stop at the driveway and look in. Here, if you looked in, you'd see a long road, and you wouldn't, you'd hardly see anything, and the same, I mean, you see, our office building will be here, and that'll be an attractive building, and that'll be in front of the actual shop. We can dress this building up to see existing 7,500 square foot building. That was used for propagating plants, for a nursery, Griffins operation. And this also here, well, this will be blocked off, as we mentioned before, where Tom's property and parking lot would be.
Mike, what material, what kind of construction materials, just for the record, will you be storing on the remainder of the site? And can you give me an idea of the height of those materials, et cetera?
We would have sand. First of all, we would have, we're going to be looking to provide materials such as stone, crushed stone, and topsoil, and bark mulch, and things like that for local people and landscapers. Secondly, we would continue to screen our topsoil as we do, we sell a lot of topsoil. And we would continue our recycle process, which we do a tremendous amount, just about every driveway contractor in the town uses our process, plus we use it on dozens of jobs here in town. So, there's a need for that, and also, right now, there's no place to do that. So, we, you know, if we can move that use from there, from Iron Horse Boulevard to the other end of town, we'd be able to accomplish that. And when you think about the recycling effort, by the way, with recycle process, if you think about what it costs, how much you make, or how much you save, and how it saves the environment, this, the, you know, newspaper compared to recycle process, it's, there's so much of it that, you know, you have to do something with it, and it used to go to the landfills or to fill lots, but now we just recycle everything, also stops the corries from continuing a lot, saves a lot of corrying and all that other stuff.
Where I'm going with the height of the material, and the type of material protection, really because you're going to be doing a lot of screening, is if you look at your existing site, you're basically totally enveloped by trees, and you really don't have any adjacent on your side of the street business owners. And I think you're nicely protected, particularly on a secondary road on Iron Horse. Walcott is more of a primary road, and you're completely open to the north and to the, I'm sorry, to the east and to the south of the property, such that wind could be an issue with your type of materials to adjacent business owners, landowner. I would, if it were me, I would, I would want there to be adequate explanation and comfort that the adjacent landowners, business owners aren't going to be covered in so, at some point.
The, we could, we could tree this area here, which is about 100 feet, from this point right here to the runway were about 100 feet. If, as far as the height goes, just as a way to clarify this, because I anticipate the question of height, the planes coming into. I'll give you an example. The elevation coming through the site right here is about 185, 185 feet above sea level. The top of the dump is 240 feet. There's 60 feet of difference between here and here. As far as, even at the closest, you run this runway right out here, this ends up at 180, over 180 right in here, and quickly jumps up. So, to be honest with you, I don't think we ever have a pile more than, we won't have a pile 60 feet high.
No, that's fine. I just like, have you talked to the airport by chance?
Have not.
Okay. Because my, you know, if, if there is any blow-off from your stored material, particularly on, which way do the planes approach on the airport?
Usually this way, right here, I believe. They come in from the south.
Both ways.
They do both. Actually, the runway rises as you, as you go north. It starts out, it is about 20 feet, I believe, or not, from here to the end, which I had no idea was that much rising, then. That's what the topsoil said.
We'll be sure to, I'd be, have a conversation with everybody.
I was just going to.
Read that information to the zone change.
Derek raised the same question. Before you bring it in, I would strongly encourage that, because the special exception itself, I mean, they exclude, the not permitted uses would be anything that would raise a lot of dust or dirt, and that's why I started with the question about how much is not finished, because if you're driving trucks in and out, constantly kicking up dust or not, you want to be sure the neighbors, when you bring, when we have a public hearing about this, you want to be sure you've gotten the neighbors on board with this, and the parking, is that Phoneon that we're talking about is your neighbor, or?
Yeah, but neighbor Tom Martin is from, is president of Phoneon, and he is our neighbor to immediate north, which is right here. And we have had this discussion, we, all the trucks will be coming in on the southerly side of the site.
Right.
Exclusive truck entrance right here. There's a anti-track pad here. Also, there's a significant amount of pavement. The difference between this location and where we are now, it's only about 50 feet of pavement down there. This is 100 feet right to here, probably going in 300 feet before, you'll be on blacktop on 300 feet before you get onto the road. So, besides go through an anti-track pad, which we don't have right now.
Right.
So, we, we know, we, you know, we're treating it just like it's, say, a regular construction job, and today, some of the, you know, the road control methods, they make you foot in place.
Well, it seems like a logical use for the property. I, I don't think any of us are, or I'm not suggesting that, I'm just saying that we're going to have a public hearing, and you want to know, you don't want to come to that meeting without having talked to your neighbors. If your neighbors are in support of it, there's nobody else around there, and it fits, you're probably going to be fine with this.
An answer, quickly, an answer for this area right here is we store the recycle process here, there's no dust in the recycle process.
Okay.
So, the only place to place it.
We can indicate on our plan what'll be stored where, so it's part of your pool, so it's part of a process later on.
The material that, the dust is in topsoil. It's the topsoil. That'd have to be up here somewhere. Okay? And the thing is, topsoil can also be managed differently. You don't necessarily have to have an open pile. The large storage piles, you process the material, you put it in a pile, and you seed it. Then a week and a half, two weeks, it starts to germinate.
Right.
And it protects everything, and if we, if we, that's not a problem. I mean, that's not something that would be, we broadcast seed, it's not a very expensive process, you just have to do it.
What about number of trucks? How many, how many truck visits per day are coming in and out of the site?
Well, some days, quite a few, and some days, not too many. Well, just like Iron Horse, just like we do on Iron Horse. The difference we have here, though, is that we, a lot of the traffic is going to end up going to the north, to East Granby, because that's our quickest way to get onto the, onto the highway.
Right.
Okay? As, you know, go in Floydville Road, you go in Floydville Road, take a right on Hartford Avenue, and you're on a state highway right to Route 91.
Yep.
Very important, because a lot of our material goes to Granby, a lot of our material goes to Bloomfield, and we've been doing a lot of work over in town and county, so the material ends up getting, we have to get on highways in order to get over there. Right now, leaves the center of town, it's got to go through the town this way or through the town that way. So, it's going to help, it's actually, the location helps us in a lot of ways, because it's less time that our trucks spend in traffic.
Easier access. Easier access.
Yeah, I echo Rob's sentiments about it. It's not necessarily a criticism. It's, if I'm a neighbor and know nothing about it, you know, it's easier to criticize something than it is to be accepting of itself. Coming up with whatever I can now to, to pick it up a little bit.
And if there's any more thoughts like that, please feel free to.
Well, the one to the south would be Community Farm.
Community Farm is.
Yeah, they work outside.
Right, so they, they.
Community Farm is right, uh, Town Farm is right there.
But they, but they, don't they have a couple of greenhouses on the other side of the road?
That's, these are not, this is the actual property, but.
Between, yeah, but between your prop, your proposed property and the dump, I thought there were some greenhouses that the Town Farm manages.
They did. They're gone now. They're gone. They were right here. They're on, I did find them on an aerial photo, an old aerial photo. And they were, it was one right here. I think it was temporary. I think they put it up and then took it, took it down.
But still took it down.
But these are all gone right now. The shit, the big barn is gone. The only thing that remains is the.
We approved that a year or so, a couple of years ago, for classroom stuff that they do. Who, is the town on that property next to it, to you?
The town owns 90 acres here. 91, I think it is. Town owns 90 acres. Where the dump is, you're going to cross down through the back here. And I think the original property back here belonged to Culbrow at one time. They, Baker owned it for a while, and I think it's since been sold to, um, the town. Oh, the airport. The airport owns back here. The town owns over here. Right beyond them. The town owns 90 acres right here. The airport owns all the way to, there's none of this, none of this, but, um. All the way to the river.
Yeah, the river's the next to the back.
And that's what, Baker, Baker sold the property to, um.
Airport or Associates or something to that effect.
And who's across the street from your proposed facility, besides Town Farm?
This is, um, Jim Blanchett owns the Autobahn over here, and I understand he bought all the property across the street.
Have you talked to Jim?
Not yet. I have, I know Jim, but I just haven't talked to him about it. But I will.
Rob, I have a question for you. What's the biggest difference between, uh, the I-1 and I-2?
I was going to ask, so I, I cribbed a little bit. It's, it's.
I-1 is primarily, office buildings primarily. And what I-2 does is allows, not only, as Mike said, not only what's in I-1, but also the addition of contractors' yards, which is what this proposal's about. The biggest difference between them, uh, with regard to lot size, of course, is that I-1 requires a minimum of 10 acres. And so what this proposal would actually do would be to put a non-conforming partial into conformity. And part of what you might do is look at the site plan at the same time you look at the rezon and then decide, you know, whether they're both acceptable to you. Obviously, do it with the zone first. If you decide to do that, and then look at the site plan on it. That's basically the difference.
The only other difference is that the yards in the I-1 zone are twice what the yards in the I-2 zone are. But we respected the yards in the I-1 zone, even with the I-2 plan. So, you know, and when, we could even keep, I suppose, for it as a yard because it doesn't make any difference.
Set now.
Agree, agree that the front, rear and side yards would remain as, uh, as the underlying zone begins now. Because the front yard's 50 feet, for instance, in the I-1 is 25 in the I-2.
Well, it seems like a, a logical place for you guys to go. It's great.
What's on there now?
Now, um, this is all empty right here. This one, these are all, these are all, they, we used them to, to propagate the plants. Where they grew, where they grew the seeds from seed, inside the building, actually, they grew them from seeds. And then, um, what happened was they would move them to the outside till they got to a certain height. And then they'd move them to, there's a million of them back here. I don't know if you've ever seen this from the air, but these huts, they're everywhere over there. On the other side, you know, on Floydville Road, off of Floydville Road, a lot of them. So, I'm going concern, there's no question about that. I don't know where they moved this to, but I know that they, they just, their lease just expired on December 31st. And the property, I actually was trying to, um, round it up last summer, and which so far, so good. It's just a matter of getting through the process.
How would you handle the fueling station? That's, there is a concrete part about?
The, the fuel.
It's in the gravel section.
It's in the gravel section, but it probably would be on a concrete, it'd be on a concrete pad. And these are all self-contained, um, these are all above-ground, self-contained fuel tanks. There's one gas.
So yours are above the ground.
They're all above ground and they're all self-contained, or not self-contained. Double wall tanks. So that if something were to leak, they, they don't go anywhere. We have those now. We took our tanks out of the ground years and years ago. Um, we bought the, the above-ground system, and it worked great. This will be on a concrete pad, and, um, you know, most of the fueling, you know, most of the fueling of our vehicles is done out on the sites. So the fuel truck comes in, our fuel truck comes in, comes in, fills up the tanks and leaves. So it's the same person, basically, fueling all the time. And some of the trucks, even, even fuels the trucks. So it's like a little mobile gas station that just goes from job to job. And picks up the fuel here, and a trailer load comes in every two weeks and drops off a trailer load of fuel, and it goes back out.
So you just have diesel?
Diesel, and we have gas, but just very li, very little gas. And lately, we've been buying gas at the gas stations just as easy, and the price difference is not a lot of difference from quantity, uh, and even quantity.
Can you explain a little more of the, the idea of almost retailing on the, on the mulch and whatever? Would it be?
Um, well, uh, there's a few companies doing this. There's one in Bloomfield right now where they set up these bins to decide, with it in room. You know, some half the size and some more, but what you do is you stockpile mulch and different sized stones and process and things like that. What happens is people come in with, um, their pickup trucks or trailers and, or the landscapers come in with their small dump trucks. We load them up. They pay a premium for the material, but they don't have to drive to East Granby or to some other town to get it. And it works out, and it works great. It's just another, it's a service. And most of the customers are repeat customers that keep coming in.
Right, but just when they drive, you would separate kind of that from your stuff? Because now you're going to have, um, residential vehicles, whatever, on your site, but you don't have now.
Are there, Mike, are there homeowners who come in and buy this or?
They could, they could. And what they would do is they would come in here, the office will be right here. They would be directed to stop right here. Um, somebody would go with them, they would load it, because it's not some, something that's that constant. Most of the time, Saturdays and things like that. People come in, and then they go back, they get loaded, come back, go with scale, pay whatever the price is for the material, and then leave. And they do it, they do it now, honestly. They just dig them in, but it's not quite so organized. So.
All right. Any other questions? Any other feedback? Genuinely, uh, generally very positive to me on this? All right?
Okay, very good.
Be a good neighbor, and it should not be a problem. I mean, I don't know if I'm.
Chip, you can.
I was, I was just going to, you know, I'm here to try to consider the legal side of it. And I was, I did want to spur the discussion a little bit and, and, um, say that this does require zone change. There's a legislative process by the zoning commission, and then it'll be a site plan approval as if it were already an I-2 zone. Now, my comments that I just wanted to invite you to think about are that if you look at the area in general, um, on this side of Volca Road that we're talking about, you have the airport, you have some industrial concerns, you have the Towns facility, the transfer station, you know, all of which are very solidly industrial. Now, we think that this use is compatible with that in that it would justify the zone change that we're talking about. On the other side of the, the street, um, there's commercial on the front, that was the Autobahn part that we're talking about. But behind that is a, is more industrial zone. So again, we think this is the ideal part of town to have an industrial two-zone, and that's why we are suggesting that it would be appropriate to make the zone change.
Okay. I think we got all of that.
But is your lot the only one that would be I-2, though?
Yes.
Uh, no, just, excuse me. Um, well, yes. Not I-2 use, though. Mike Vincent's down the street, he's got an I-2 use, and it's now I-1. It's actually Flood Plan, but I think Flood Plan has changed when they, when we, the innovation was changed. I've always, I always thought it was I-2, but he's got exactly the same, a very small operation. It's only an acre and a half, a lane or so. But Mike Vincent says he's got a big winged snowplow out front. I don't know if you've noticed it, but he's there. And all, uh, the other one in the area is, um, Towne Field. And they are, this is East Granby line, they're right here. So there, they're also, and then, of course, you've got the other uses down the street, more pains and, uh, cold builds down there. So it's just kind of been up in that corner.
Um, I would suggest also that the Towns use the transfer station is also more appropriately I-2 than it is I-1. Not that it needs to be changed or should be changed. It was there well before, um, probably, you know, many of the regulations we're talking about. But, but I think to evaluate it as being consistent in the neighborhood, I, I think that there are genuinely I-2 uses already there. Many of them grandfathered, but, but I think it's the perfect location.
Okay. Thank you for that.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for that.
Discussion of new and ongoing projects, uh, budget for fiscal year 2015, 16. The hearing is.
Very interesting. Actually, the presentation of our budget to the Board of directors. The meeting starts at 5:30 last Sunday, so I don't know what that is, but if you can come and have a mind, it'd be great. I will send you a copy of it as soon as I get it from the Board of Directors' office, so that you know what we're talking about. A couple of things that we proposed, that we've been talking about for a while, finishing up the We Talk study. We, uh, actually, we're asked to put that into the capital project list, which we did. Uh, rest of the things are pretty standard, just sort of keeping going. There's nothing tremendous as large or significant. Just trying to keep staff happy and keep, uh, keep back, uh, keep after the projects that we've been under, underhunk. We did finish, just got the agreement for the zoning regulation revision signed by the Board of Directors last, uh, last Friday, I think last Thursday or Friday. So we'll be starting some of the meetings with the commission and the consultant very shortly with regard to that. So if there are things in the regulations that you think, um, you know, like a major reorganization, revision of the regs, uh, in order to make them more sensible, uh, and one of the things that I've talked about, I'm not sure if I mentioned this commission or not, is that I really think that what we should try to do this time is make a, a really concerted effort to make them, insert plain language, so that people can really understand them as well. That people, uh, the public can read them and understand them just as we can. We shouldn't need attorneys to continue to, to interpret them all the time for people. So we try to make them plain language. It's one of the things I'm happy to try to head forward anyway. I'd like to talk to the consultant about that. And if there are any other specific things that you think in the regs that are not in there now, or that should be covered, or they're particularly bothersome, um, please, please prepare to bring those up, so we'll talk to that.
Wouldn't you expect the meetings to start, Hiram?
Uh, we're actually going to start, uh, we have a sort of a joint meeting with the Chamber, um, Simsbury, Main Street, and, um, the Economic Development Commission on March 20, this is Thursday, it's 24th or the 26th, I'm sorry, I'll send that out to you. That's actually going to be the, at the Simsbury, to talk about things like shared parking and sign in future. Two of the big issues I think that people are concerned about. So we wanted to bring that to the, just to get the business people's attention and to say, what are your concerns about this? And we fully understand that businesses are going to say, we want bigger signs, we want more signs. We need to balance that, obviously, with things that are sort of, that are compatible with our architectural standards and town center, things like that. So that'll be the first meeting on that. And then as soon as we sort of get some feedback from that, we'll bring it back to you and say, here's what we're thinking about going. We'll be meeting with Glenn, who's actually the one that selected to do that, or so, reorganize them to make them, uh, hopefully, a little bit more readable and a little bit more understandable. Be quicker and easier to find things, I think. We've sort of patched these things for so long, except for the center zone and Hartford property. The rest of them, they patched for a long time, so we want to straighten that out.
So who's the consultant?
Plan Metrics.
That's what you called it?
We did, uh, as you know, you approved the 690 Half Meadow Street, the former Webster Bank Building, which you're last meeting. We met again today with the applicant on that, the applicant developer on that particular project. And they're anxious to get started on the renovation to the main building first. And I mentioned to the chairman earlier that we are, um, now that they'd like to, to draw a line between the new project and the old project for financing purposes. I spent a long time with them today talking about them. First, I was a little skeptical of why they wanted to do that. But it actually makes a lot of sense if you talk about the details of it. Some people are extremely familiar with new construction. Other people are much more familiar and comfortable with rehabilitation of older construction, tax credit implications, things like that. So they're, they want to move forward with the rehabilitation of the old building as soon as possible. And would like to move forward with the new building as soon as their marketing indicates that they're ready to move forward. Probably know, know more than a year later, but they'd like to move forward with that as soon as possible as well.
Isn't the funding separate?
It is.
Because of the.
It is. And what they're, yeah, the lending institutions, and some of you know better than I, but some of the lending institutions are saying, you know, we, we really want to see this done this way so that we can make sure that we've got our pound of flesh out there. And they understand that they've got to retrieve that. Uh, they would like to get going fairly soon on that. So, it's actually lots, dividing that lot, it's never been split before. It doesn't even require official planning commission approval, but talk to the chairman of the planning commission, explain that to him. And they will be explaining that to the planning commission at their next meeting, I think on the 10th. And then we'll move forward after that. Look forward to seeing that thing move forward pretty soon, as soon as the weather breaks, if winter believes us, like to move forward.
It'll be exciting. People will be driving by, and they'll be doing work on it.
That's right. I think that'll be kind of interesting. One of the things they asked about is, sort of goes back to the sign question we just talked about. They said, you know, once they start marketing, are they going to be able to have a, a sign there? And I think we could probably try to figure out how to work with them. Obviously, another sign that would stay there long-term, you know? But some of the signs that they have shown us that, that they'd like to do are really quite nice.
Do they have to fence off the area, the construction area, or the remodel area? Do, do they have to fence off the?
They don't have, no, they don't have to fence it initially. Um, you know, it's interesting, because what, what gets presented is a whole series of problems. If you were, for example, if they were to finish the house and people would move in there, then they're going to have a construction yard in their backyard for some time. And so they're very sensitive to that. That's why, again, it takes a specific set of people with certain talents to make sure that those people are not upset by the, while their, all their constructions don't go as well, so.
Rob wants to put his name on the list, so he'd be one of those people.
Let's not put that on the record.
Uh, those are probably already gone.
The ones in the.
Jack's, he's got his friends in there.
Yeah, well, they're actually, uh, they're.
I haven't signed the Mylar, yeah.
So that's basically it. We're proceeding along with a bunch of stuff and moving forward.
Okay. Anything else for the good of the order?
I think we're in good shape. There's a lot of projects moving forward. As you said, you heard about some of the time coming forward. We're anxious to see things in the center of town start to move forward.
Maybe an abstract question, but the people that had come before us last week with, uh, the houses, the new site that would be off of Hoskins?
Yes.
Do you know what school district those would be in, or would they be split?
Haven't gotten into that yet, but I'm just.
Just curious, because of the occasion.
Yeah. Um, we, we could talk about that. Some of them, because 20% of them are affordable, it doesn't mean all of them are going to be affordable, of course. 80% of them are going to be market rate. So some of those folks could go to, they could go to public schools, they could go to some private schools. Really depends. It's sort of an interesting thing. The mix of, of product is kind of interesting here. People are talking about that already, so it should be interesting. But I'll check that out.
Has there been, in your experience, Hiram, has there been a real acceptance of not owning your own, like, not having a property line? You know, when you have a, you know, single-family home. As part of an association, you're really not, you don't have a definitive boundary.
Yeah, some, some people have exclusive use areas, you know, but, I mean, Jackie is probably better than I, but, you know, what, what younger people today, they want new, they want to be able to lock it and leave it.
Yep.
They don't care, you know? If they've got a place to have their barbecue and a little patio, and they don't have to mow the grass or shovel the snow.
Isn't Anya?
They're fine.
But they'll have to, they'll have to mow their lawn.
A lot of people don't know.
The association would take care of it.
Would they really?
Yeah.
Oh, wow.
Well, I think.
I thought it was just road.
They may have, um, exclusive use area, I haven't seen the final plan yet, so I don't know for sure. I would not be surprised if they had little exclusive use areas around each of the units there.
That's what he said.
Yeah. So they may have that.
Encourages to take care of your property, but you don't have to pay for the guy to come over and plow.
You don't all have to plant great petunias, you know, you can do whatever, whatever. And sometimes, you know, that was really an issue. I mean, years and years ago, there was a complex in South Berrier Village, a big complex, as you know. And there were a lot of discussions about that, because a lot of people are older, they like their garden. And they were told, you know, you can't do this, you can't do that, so. A lot of issues to work out. There's no questions, but, um, explained it to some of the people that you would normally think would be very negative about that concept today. I think one of the things that's really interesting about that particular site is the potential for walkability. Down to the corner, to the Big Y, to have your kids go to the skating center, whatever, could work out really well. So, we'll see what happens when it comes back.
Well, from a town standpoint, is there any value in connecting it to the back, to the, to the road we have to the skating center?
You know, Kevin, after we just went through with the Big Y and the reason there, I'm not, I'm not sure about that, to be honest with you. Ideally, does it make sense? Yeah, I think it does. But whether it could be done in a, a reasonably, you know, expeditious fashion, I just don't know.
So maybe a walkway would be only.
Make it a cut through that.
I think, yeah.
I just thought it needed to be looked at as a more holistically than just looking at the property.
No, it's a great idea.
The road kind of ends now, you know.
But there's that idea that.